Good afternoon and welcome to our community's forum for Petaluma City Council candidates. I'm Amber Soboslay and my colleague Gabriela Aranzas and I will be moderating today's forum. The North Bay Organizing Project Petaluma welcomes everyone to today's public forum. Today is an opportunity to hear from our next city leaders. Our group is a multiracial-based building organization composed of 21 local institutions that unite to build leadership and grassroots power for social, economic, racial, and environmental justice. I am one of NBOPetaluma's current co-chairs. I'm a biologist and a tenured Petaluma resident and mom to a kid who goes to school here. I'm here today because I support the work of NBOP to mobilize youth and people of color from Sonoma County to fight climate change. From what I see, our city has been slow to lead that fight. I'm worried because the effects of climate change are worse for low-income people and people of color. I've been watching this play out since last year's fires as high rents and low vacancy have made it the most difficult for these groups to continue to live here. I'm hopeful that through the work of NBOP in our community, we can help to improve these conditions in Petaluma. NBOP's Petaluma chapter is made up of people who contribute to Petaluma as residents, neighbors, students, workers, and employers. Some of us have lived here and worked here all of our lives. The issues we focus on are decided by our membership and we work together to affect change in our local community by organizing neighbors and residents who may otherwise feel voiceless. We also collaborate with other local groups to harness collective power and effect change. We are grateful for the participation of these groups. They bring diversity to the process of evaluating today's candidates and we recognize and thank these co-sponsors for their help hosting this event. They include the Friends of the Petaluma River, the Latinx Student Congress of Sonoma County, North Bay LGBTQI families, oppose the Petaluma Safeway gas station, Petaluma Community Relations Council, Petaluma Rapid Response Network, The Racist Rooster, the Sonoma County Commission on Human Rights, and the Unitarian Universalists of Petaluma. Today, we have an opportunity to gain insight to the men and women who are candidates for the three open Petaluma City Council seats. Today's questions are centered around the experiences and concerns of the typically voiceless members of our community. Note: Some of us have strong accents when we speak English. Some of us don't look like we're from here. Some of us are houseless. Some of us are too young to vote. Ultimately, we are all members of Petaluma and we expect to be respected and valued no matter what our status. We're excited for the opportunity to welcome new city council members, including those who will work with us and not against us. We have collaborated with our network of community partners to develop six questions that will provide the public with more insight into the kind of community partner you will be. The audience will also have an opportunity to ask questions. Dear audience, if you would like your question to be included, there are no cards available to write them on. Please make sure to get them in by the end of the third question. We will provide a few reminders and keep in mind that we may not get to ask every question that gets submitted. So I'd like to start today with a job description that we came up with with the help of our co-sponsors. And that's to give candidates a chance to understand their audience today and to understand the groups that are represented here. Our vision for the job description of Petaluma City Council candidate is as follows: Be concerned about inequality and advocate steps to reduce it. Widen citizen participation in decision-making. Enact policies that help protect the working, middle, and lower-class population. Adopt inclusionary city hall meeting practices that allow true representation from all different walks of life. Listen to voices that might not otherwise be heard. Represent the community you serve. Be a bold leader who protects people who are suffering. Celebrate diversity and be compassionate in your work with citizens. Research and understand the needs of different groups within the community. Appoint a city manager who upholds these values. Now, I'd like to take a moment to go over our format today. Our candidates will begin with 90-second opening statements. We'll ask six questions from NBOP Petaluma and our co-sponsors, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. The second half will feature questions from the audience, again with a minute to respond. At the end, we'll have closing statements from our candidates, which will be 90 seconds each, and then we'll complete the forum with a closing statement from our second operator, Gabriela. Candidates will have a timekeeper that indicates the timing for 30 seconds, 10 seconds, and stop. If you are over your time, I will remind you that we need to stay on schedule. We are providing simultaneous Spanish translation today and we are grateful to our translators for this assistance. As speakers, you can do two things to help this process. First, please allow for a five-count pause between your responses. Second, you can look to our translators. They will let you know to slow down with a hand signal. Translators, can you please raise your hands? There in the back Manuel and Dabby. So with that, I'd like to begin with our opening statements and we'll start with Kevin.
Good afternoon.
You'll give a 30-second warning, so go ahead and start.
Good. Hi, I'm Kevin McDonald and I'm running for city council. I've been a resident of Petaluma for over 30 years. I raise my four children here in town and two of the four have elected to try and live in Petaluma, which is a challenge for our young people. One of the things that got me motivated to run for city council was I'd like to see our town be the kind of place where our children can live and raise their children. My background is, I started with all the things that kids get me into, like youth sports, youth soccer, church groups, school groups. Found myself leading many of those groups. Ending up leading the youth soccer program when there were 3,000 kids in the program. And also moving on to figure out we needed more ball fields in town, leading a bond measure in town to try and get that done. And then also moving on to being on the city's park and rec commission, which helped me on by appointing me to the youth commission, to the arts commission. I feel like I've learned my way to a position where I'd be a really good city council person at this time. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Scott Alonso and I'm a candidate for city council. I am a renter. I live on the east side of town and I've been in Petaluma for a few years. And the reason why I was drawn to Petaluma is that we have a vibrant, funky, hip place. Not only from our downtown, but our love of open space, our love for the river, and I want to stay here, but there are challenges facing us. I don't want to get to a situation where we have a tale of two Petalumas. And I'm not talking about the east versus west divide politically that's traditionally here in Petaluma. I'm talking about folks who can't afford to stay here anymore. We are facing a crisis, not only in Petaluma, but in our entire region. A crisis of homelessness, a crisis of mental health services, and a crisis of affordable housing. We need folks on the city council to advocate for those issues so we can have our families stay here and young people stay here because we want to. We love Petaluma. My background professionally, I'm a public information officer for the District Attorney's Office in Contra Costa County. Prior to that, I worked for the Sonoma County Health Department as their communications manager. And so I have a background at the county level, in local government, and prior to that, I worked for the state assembly, helping local residents deal with state agencies. So I was your point of contact, your advocate, to get unemployment insurance, to help with workers' compensation, to deal with Caltrans. And so I have a breadth of experience and I'm happy to be here. Thank you for coming. Thank you for all the volunteers that set this up. It's an exciting time in Petaluma and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dennis Sposakam. Also running for city council. Appreciate you all being here today and NBOP for putting this on. I've been in Petaluma 27 years with my family, two children and my wife. I have been a physician throughout the North Bay. I've done primary care at Kaiser. I've also done occupational and environmental medicine. I have degrees in engineering and public health as well. I think I have some different skills to bring to the city council. I've also been involved on the ground in helping with tenant protections and housing issues in Petaluma the last few years. And I'd like to bring this experience to city council as well. I'm very concerned about the loss of the middle class in our country and in Petaluma in particular. And one of, in fact, my biggest issue is producing more affordable housing. I feel that through my work in medicine that I've learned how to not just listen, but to hear people as they talk about their difficult problems and also to consider complex and difficult decisions that have to be made without having as much information as you would like to have. In terms of the city, I won't provide that simple solutions. Our problems are complex and the solutions will be complex. I believe that solving these problems together...
Hello, I'm Rob Conklin. I'm running for city council. I'd like to thank NBOP for having us today. I'm a fourth-generation Petaluma native. My great-great-grandparents bull and oxen carted out to Two Rock and my family's been here ever since. I've lived here all my life. I don't think I've ever been out of Petaluma for more than two weeks, so that's something to be said about that. I'm most likely going to die here, so you're all stuck with me. I am the middlest of middle class, if that makes any sense. I'm a working father. I have a wife, two kids, and a mortgage. I lived on the west side for 26 years and now I'm on the east. Been there for 14. I bought a house and for the first 10 years, lived my life with a snorkel in my mouth because my house was so underwater, but I stuck it out and I'm still here. And now, you know, I feel as a person who could champion for Petaluma working-class citizens that, you know, I could always, I might not have all the solutions, but I would at least put working families at the forefront of the conversation and, you know, just be here for people trying to make ends meet and just trying to get by. Too many of my friends are one-page check away from losing their house and I know how they feel. And let's try to keep all our friends here in Petaluma. We're on this boat together, so let's do it. Thank you.
I am the alcoa amongst tenders and bases, I must say. Thank you so much for NBOP and thank all of you here for being in the audience and being so committed to this city and wanting to learn more about all of us. This spring, I was inspired to run for city council because of all the other women all around our country who are rising up and saying, "It's my time." And with the Me Too movement, I really sort of brought home to me that I in fact know that I have the skills and the knowledge and the education and the experience that really is needed on the city council. And I want to serve this community. I do a lot of volunteer work and this is what I want my new volunteer job to be, is to serve you. And I've had three careers. My first was as an urban planner. I have a master's in urban planning from University of Southern California. And for 25 years, I worked as a consultant, not only for commercial developers, but for nonprofit housing developers. And I also sat on the planning commission, so I understand the issues and sitting on both sides of the dais and making the decision and asking somebody else to make that decision on my project. My second career was actually as a retailer. I opened a women's athletics store and I had it for six years in Los Angeles and ended up closing it because of the recession and moved here five years ago and started working for nonprofits. And worked for Daily Axe. Many of you know me as an operations manager and now work for Regent of Agriculture. Thank you.
My name is Dave Kaden and my voice is checking out. I've had about three months of this, so I apologize if you have to listen to this scratchy voice. I moved here 27 years ago with my wife Lynn. We raised both our daughters here, Carrie and Katie, Petaluma high school graduates. During the course of my life here, I coached girls' sports for 16 years, 31 teams. My paying job, even though I'm an incumbent, I got elected in 2014, is as a lawyer. I practice employment law in downtown Petaluma, representing primarily employees in discrimination, harassment, and retaliation cases. I've probably advised, I've represented several thousand people. I don't know how many of them are from Petaluma, but I can comfortably say 500 to 600. And if you're talking about inclusion, one of the places that you need inclusion is in the workplace. And I've been fighting for that for my entire career. On the council, we will talk about our accomplishments. One of the things I think that when you get on the council, the best thing you can do is look around to your colleagues and recognize that they also got elected. And that you need to listen to them, compromise, so that you can accomplish some things, which I think we have done in my four years, as opposed to what's going on in Washington DC where there is no compromise, no discussion, and no listening.
Thank you for the introductions. I know that 60 seconds is a short time to answer questions. This first question is three parts, so I'm going to ask you to keep your answers short. I will restate the question simply after I read through it, so you can take a chance at that time to jot down reminders to yourself about the question. What is the most important strategy Petaluma can pursue to keep the city affordable and how can you concretely move that forward? What is at stake if the cost of housing continues to stay out of the reach of working Once elected in office, will you put a just cause eviction ordinance on the agenda? Now I'll restate the questions slightly more briefly. What strategy will you pursue to keep the city affordable to live in? What is at stake if working people can't afford to live here? Will you put just cause eviction on the agenda? So we are going to begin again with Kevin and then we'll move down the row and you guys can answer the first question and we'll begin the next question with the next in line. So Scott, you can know that you'll be answering the second question first. So with that, I'd like to give Kevin the mic.
Thank you. I think affordable housing is a key, key issue. After my time doing youth sport things, I moved into adult issues. I started Know Before You Grow, a citizens forum about affordable housing and housing crisis in Petaluma because we would go to development meetings and be unsatisfied. We would listen to city council and be unsatisfied as to where growth and affordability was happening. We knew we needed to make a change. We needed to empower ourselves. We get 50 to 100 people come to these every time. There was one just this week on affordable housing where we hosted and had many solutions presented, from the Housing Land Trust, which is a great model, to Pep Housing for senior and veterans. All those are key, key issues. If we don't do something about the affordability, our town changes. It's no longer the demographics we want. People move out and we become a braying senior agency full of wealth in-house, but no wealth in community and diversity. Thank you.
I will give you one more moment to answer the last part. Will you put a just cause eviction on the agenda?
Just cause eviction is...
Yes or no answer.
It's nuanced and I don't know that it needs to be on the agenda as a first action
I'll start with the last question first. I would support putting a just cause eviction on the agenda. I think it's one of the tools we need as a city to protect our renters. And as a renter myself, I think that's where we need to go. We need to have more clarity for landlords and tenants on what the rules are to protect tenants so they can stay here. So I would absolutely support that. I think what's at stake here is, like I mentioned in my opening, we have too many people having to leave Petaluma. And on a civic side of it, for our city employees, they can't afford to stay here. That's a public safety concern. If we don't have folks who can come back if there's a disaster to get back to Petaluma to protect us because they have to live hours and hours of wait to commute to get here. So that's a huge concern of mine. That's what's at stake. We, and you know, there is a gray population. That's not just my hair on my head, but we are getting older as a community, right? We are getting old fast. And so if we don't protect our seniors and our young people, we won't be able to grow appropriately. And I think how do we move forward on housing? One quick thing we did as a Petaluma planning commissioner, we passed the inclusionary housing ordinance.
While we sit here talking, people are moving out of Petaluma. Families are leaving Petaluma. Everyone agrees it's a crisis. No one's taking much action. I, let me, so I don't run out of time at the end, I also support just cause eviction at an early stage if I'm elected. I believed as a physician that patients needed a patient bill of rights and I believe tenants need a bill of rights as well. I think this is the first step in that regard. If we're going to improve our affordable housing situation, we need to find a new revenue stream to do that. The state, the feds, people, people in recent years on the council have talked about waiting for the state or the feds to do something, but as I read all of these things, the city needs to provide some local funding as well. And I'm not certain about the revenue source. We have a choice of many areas. I think the option is for Petaluma to become a gated community with police have to prove.
Well, Petaluma is a small community and the people that are moving out, we most likely know them by name. Thank God for Governor Brown putting some sort of rent control in. We should do the minimum, which I believe expires in December, we should do the bare minimum and extend that. Yes, I am for just cause evictions because a family cannot be looking over their shoulders wondering, is my rent going to be raised that I can't afford it or am I going to be kicked out for no reason? That does not build community. That is just opportunistic people trying to cash in, especially with the fires. Housing is getting real slim to none and we need to do everything to keep working families in Petaluma. If we don't have some sort of guidelines and rules, then we will not have a middle class. We will not have working class. We will just have the haves and have-nots. And that's not what I want for my city. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to answer this going backwards. Yes, I support just cause eviction and yes, I would support putting it on the agenda. And also recognizing that there is a very strong lobby in this county that will be against that and that we need to be able to meet with them and hopefully come up with some resolution because they are strongly going to oppose it. Second of all, I'm supporting Prop 10, which is overturning Costa-Hawkins, which will allow us as a city to have more control over our rents. Right now, we don't have any control over anything except for mobile home parks and anything built before 1995. And so by allowing us to have that control, then we can again lobby and work with landlords to find a solution to what would be the maximum rents that we could raise it. And it's a short-term solution. Rent control, I think, over the long term doesn't work, but I think we need it now. And then the third part of the question is, what do we lose if we don't have affordable housing? We have people commuting. We add more stress. We don't have people that live here that work here and that's what we need.
Well, first of all, in the four years I've been on the council, we have done two things which have attempted to make things more affordable here at Petaluma. In September, the city council, after a year of deliberation, significantly increased the fees to developers in a way that will require the developers to make 15% of new housing be falling the category of affordable or inclusionary housing. This is a significant step in the right direction. In addition, we've loosened restrictions on accessory mowing units and granny units, which will allow people to keep, to build homes, smaller homes on their own property. And there's more to be done with regard to zoning. I think driving zoning and development to smaller units that are priced in the market at a lower rate is a better solution. Getting back to the just cause, I don't support it because our housing ordinances are not free. We have to pay for the enforcement and that enforcement will come from our affordable housing program to have a choice in reality between one or the other.
Thank you for putting up with that long question. Moving on, I would like to remind the audience to make sure you get your question cards in and hand it to one of our staff members. Our second question today, we'll start with Scott. Scott, since the October 2017 fires, we have been in a state of emergency that limits rent increases to 10%. This moratorium is set to expire on December 4th, 2018. Given the impact of the housing crisis on renters in Petaluma, I have the following three questions. Actually, it's two and a reminder at the end. I will restate them again after I read them. Will you publicly ask the sitting council to extend the moratorium in time for their upcoming council meeting on Monday, October 15th? That's in two days. If the council does not extend the moratorium, will you vote to extend the emergency moratorium if you are elected? Please be sure to answer yes or no to both parts while you're answering this question and I'll restate them in shorter form. Will you immediately move to extend the moratorium by Monday? If elected, will you vote to extend the moratorium?
Well, that's pretty easy for me. Yes to both. And I think, you know, there's a few things need to happen overall for tenants' rights. One, like Delinda mentioned, we need to support Proposition 10, which will repeal Costa-Hawkins. And what that will do is it will allow local control for communities like Petaluma to vote on rent control locally and actually have it applied to multiple types of units because right now, state law prohibits us from actually applying it to any unit built before 1995. So any unit after 95 currently under state law, we can't touch with rent control. I think rent control can be phased in. We can work with smaller landlords to see how we can work with them, but ultimately, we need help and we need relief right now. The fires underscored a huge need in our community and I think, as I mentioned earlier, it's a regional problem, right? Just like the fires. Petaluma was fortunate. We didn't have any damage here, but the damage that San Rosa saw and Sonoma Valley saw is trickling down in Petaluma because those folks want to stay in our county and they're moving here. So I think extending the moratorium makes sense and I would advocate for it.
I'm also yes to both questions and I'd like to point out that I've been publicly asking the council to do that for the duration of my campaign. I also would promise to work as hard as possible to reinstate the moratorium if it's allowed to lapse by the current council. I want to point out one additional thing is that many of the groups, well, let me rephrase that, some of the groups that are sponsoring this forum are also part of the Coalition for a Just Recovery, to my knowledge. And I would urge you to look up the Coalition for a Just Recovery online and to find the suggestions they've made to recover from the fire, most of which align with my own for the reason for increasing our affordable housing supply and ways to do that.
Yes and yes. I kind of stated in my last one. And we do need to repeal Costa-Hawkins, so we'll guess on 10. Yeah, I answered the question on that one. So I'll just be regurgitating what everybody else is saying, so I'll say all that. But yes, yes on rent control, just cause evictions. I've heard all side, on both sides. I've heard a different side trying to explain why rent control hurts the people. It's trying to help, which I call BS on that one. So, thank you.
So kind of you, Mr. Conklin. Thank you. I don't know that the city council has the authority to extend the moratorium. The moratorium was issued by the governor of the state and so I think it's... And so I think it's the governor of the state that needs to extend that moratorium. And again, we've talked about rent control. We've talked about tenant rights. And I'd like to talk about affordable housing and how we get that built. And in my vision for Petaluma, it's the expansion of our downtown. And it's the mixed-use character of that with pedestrian level retail on the front for our local businesses and housing and workspaces above up to like five stories stepped back from the street. So that still becomes walkable and pleasant with street trees. And I'd like to extend, extend that up toward the smart station and the fairgrounds. And so build housing, there's smaller units, more affordable for our entering and exiting workforce. And that's what I would like to see us do in order to increase our housing stock and decrease the reliance on vehicles. Thank you.
Well, the first part of the question about October 15th is fairly easy. It's too late to put anything on our agenda. We have notice requirements. And anything that would have to be on the agenda would have to be placed on by Thursday. So as to the second part, I, I believe this is really a state law solution. I don't know that the city, within the ambit of Costa-Hawkins and other rent control laws and landlord tenant laws, can unilaterally extend, extend that. And I just, I would rather see the state do it because I think that would be the cleanest way for the, the extension to happen for about six months or whatever period is needed while this area recovers from what happened last October.
Yes and yes. Is that shocking? No, we have an emergency ordinance in place and the emergency is not over. The numbers are like 5,000 housing units needed. And that's going to be a while before that, that emergency is sated. And, and who knows if that's even the right number. But what, what matters here is that we have a regional solution. So while yes, I would advocate at the council level, I would also advocate at the state level where a better solution can come from. But either way, we need the extended, it extended. Again, to my know before you grow experience, we had a developer in and we said, you know, this apartment complex that you're building, what's your vision for what happens in here? Is it for seniors to move into? Is it first time out of your folks' house apartment? What are you thinking? And the developer said, hey, we're just trying to rent the place. If there is vision, it has to come from the city council. And that's the kind of thing we need to push forward. The smaller units, downtown transit oriented development in our town.
Thank you. I want to remind the audience, if you have questions to turn in, please raise your hands so our staff can find you to collect them. We'll now move on to our third question. We'll begin with Dennis. This question, you can choose to answer yes or no. And we would like an explanation based on your answer. Are Spanish-speaking residents and immigrants well-integrated into the life of the community? If you agree, please provide examples why. If you disagree, what steps would you take to make Petaluma a truly welcoming community for all? I'll repeat the question. Are Spanish-speaking residents and immigrants well-integrated into the life of the community? If yes, why? If no, how will you make Petaluma truly welcoming for all?
I would, excuse me. I would say that overall, on the, on the whole, my answer would be no. They're not as well-integrated as I would like to see them be. I think this gets to the question of diversity throughout our town. I think that it's important, it, it's easier to say the word diversity or to use the word than to make it happen. And in this sense, I feel like the city council has to set the tone for promoting the value of diversity. And also for making it part of the vision for our city. I think that our, our Spanish-speaking community has, has become more absorbed into the community through the El Dia de los Muertos. But that we need to ensure that everyone making hiring decisions for the city also consider diversity and institutional racism.
I think Petaluma has made some fine steps into welcoming our Spanish-speaking residents. There's always room for improvement. We have Dia de los Muertos. Please do excuse my accent on that one. We also have Long Vista Elementary School, which is a Spanish inversion school, which I was looking for my children to go into. Wasn't the right fit, but I would be proud to have my children be bilingual in any language. Most of the Spanish-speaking residents are working class families, working class people, just like I am. And I respect that. And let's do everything we can to welcome people of, you know, all walks of life. No matter who you love, where you came from, let's welcome Petaluma. Like I said, we're all in this boat together. Let's, let's enjoy the ride. So, thank you.
So our city is about 69% white. And so I think it's not just about the Spanish-speaking community, but it's about all the rest of the diversity of this community. And no, I don't think we've done a very good job as a city. And one of the things I'd really like to do, probably even if I don't get elected to city council, is to start holding town hall forums. Because I think we really need opportunities like we have today. But not just during the election cycle, but constantly to allow people to become involved in our community, to come together to talk about the important issues like homelessness. We're not really talking about it. We're not finding solutions to it. We're not funding COTS enough. So there are all, all sorts of other issues that we need to address as well. And so I would really like the opportunity to bring this community together and to provide places that we can have these discussions.
Well, the history of immigration in this country generally involves people coming from all over the world. And I think the short answer to your question is no. The initial generations do have a difficult time fully integrating into American society and vice versa. Generationally, as, as they move on, we talk about Spanish speaking. That's generally the first generation because by the third generation, many people who come from Spanish-speaking backgrounds are not limited to Spanish. We could definitely do a better job, both at the council level, but we can also do a better job as a community striving for a more inclusive society. But we do have a number of organizations in town, nonprofits primarily, but others to the city government that work to include all people. But as a society here in Petaluma, in California, and in the United States, we can always do better.
We have, we have not done well enough yet in this area. And partially, the Spanish-speaking community is not as well-integrated because they create a parallel influence. I learned this in, uh, working in soccer, was we were thinking we needed to integrate them. And then they showed us what they had going. And they're creating a parallel. What we need to do is be more welcoming and have it be less feared to join the existing dominant culture to integrate into this. I've been a big advocate for diversity for a long time. For instance, from the Partner Rent Commission, when the city explained how many workers they had hired, I asked how many were Spanish-speaking? And they said, we don't know. It's not that they were good or bad. It's just the, you gotta have metrics. You gotta be advancing this. When the soccer league said, we're bringing in a bunch of lads from England to coach, I said, it has to be a woman in the bunch. You can't just hire boys. My wife is on the board of the day labor movement here in town. So I have a longer answer.
First off, the, the short answer to the question is no. And I think we need to be honest about how we can bridge gaps in our community. And that starts by having meaningful community engagement and dialogue. And how do we foster that? How do we build that trust? Right now, that isn't necessarily happening. And that's a challenge for city hall. And I think that's a challenge for most folks. Most people don't understand local government. Most people don't know what a city council is. Most people don't know John Brown's the city manager. So how do we break down those barriers? First, we need to make a more inclusive process. Our city council meetings, most people don't go to city council meetings. How do we get them out? How do we hold meetings on the east side of town? How do we hold more meetings at the library here? How do we integrate with our nonprofits to call out what's happening in town? How to get involved? Why does your voice matter? Why should it matter? These are answers we have to answer, especially for the Spanish-speaking population because most of our materials are in English. Most of our, all of our agendas that are posted are in English. And so we don't do enough to include. And lastly, that's why I'm in favor of district elections for city council because we need more representation at city hall.
Okay, thank you. This is the final reminder for all question cards to be turned in to our staff. Thank you. And we'll now move on to the fourth question. And we'll be starting with you, Rob. I'll, I'll state the question twice. Petaluma has a long history of hate crimes. The most recent crime statistics indicate that hate crimes are on the rise with half of 2017's reported crimes occurring in Petaluma. What are you going to do to change the trend of rising hate crimes? Again, I'll restate the question. What are you going to do to change this trend of rising hate crimes?
I think a lot of hate crimes stem from fear and just not understanding where people are coming from. I've noticed lately, Petaluma Police Department has hired bilingual officers. I'm trying to think of the, I believe Latinx is the politically correct term. What I can do, I think it's us as a society and a culture. We have to bring awareness and bring understanding and bring cultures together. It's about opening up a dialect and making people realize that, you know, we're just here. Most of us are just trying to keep a roof over our head, food on the table, and get from point A to point B. And once we realize that we have a lot more in common than what we have different, I think the world would be a lot better place. Thank you.
We, I think, are a divided community in just our languaging. And when we talk about east side versus west side, where are you from? Are you from the east side or the west side? And that creates this division amongst all of us. And yes, we're geographically divided, but we are not divided as humans and as members of this community. We are, whether you live, whatever neighborhood you live in, and let's start talking about what neighborhood we live in as opposed to where in the city you live. I live near Petaluma High School. So I think it's, it's an issue of, of how we frame it. And, and that we need to reframe the fact that all of us are in this together and provide opportunities for us, again, to be coming together and to talking to each other and understanding each other and those opportunities. And reframing the, the language that we use in terms of us versus them.
Well, first of all, I'm not certain that hate crimes are up in Petaluma. I know crime generally has been down and trending downward since 1990. However, to the point of the question, I think the main thing we can do is in our schools with education, in our families and in our homes, to talk to our kids about the diverse people in our, in our society, that everybody is not the same, that there are differences, and that it's important to respect every person that you come across. Beyond that, I think all of us have an obligation to speak to each other in respectful way, to treat each other respectfully. And in terms of combating crime, I think we have a very strong police department. But it's very underfunded. And we need more officers so we can do the full nature of community policing, which I think offsets a lot of this.
Similarly, I would, I would think that the, from my, my observation is that the hate crime is not on the rise particularly. But one incident of hate crime in a community is cancerous. And it allows others to think like that. So immediately, we need to shine a light on it. What we had as community response, that Fourth of July incident was brilliant. The fact we have social media to get the word out that people won't tolerate hate crimes in our community was brilliant. But it comes down to, again, diversity, diversity in your life, welcoming in your life. I don't know that you change all the other people. But if you just change the people around you and, and you're loud and proud about inclusion in a community, then I think we go a long way towards having the community we want that doesn't have hate crimes. It's just, it's important to shine a light on any behavior in life that just have no tolerance for that at all. Thank you.
Fortunately, the city council last year passed, it won't happen here, the resolution promoting the Latinx community, promoting diversity, standing up against what's happening in Washington DC. And I think that's an appropriate role for us as civic leaders here, to be a voice for the voiceless, to stand up against injustice and to recognize our own privilege. You know, as a white man, I have a certain privilege. How do we talk about that? How do we be honest about that with the community? That's important. You know, we can't solve every problem here just in Petaluma with rising hate crime. But we have to call it out. We have to foster collaboration and diversity as a value for our civic leaders and as a value for you too. But if no one stands up and talks about it, then it's going to get swept under the rug. And that's what we don't want to happen. Unfortunately, I think nationally, we're seeing hate crimes rise across the country due in large part to the president. And not to get partisan here, but that's a reality. We have to stand up and continue to be a voice for those who may not have the same power dynamics that we have.
Yes, we have hate crimes in Petaluma. But I, I think maybe they're too infrequent, even with the hate we had over the course of a year, to, to be the, the thing we need to address. I'm concerned that we have many more hate incidents, if you will, that don't rise to the level of hate crimes. And I'd like to think there's something we could do more than teach our own children in, in terms of this because I think many of us have spent a lifetime doing that and we're still seeing these hate incidents. I'd like to think that we could develop some sort of a system. I had, when I go door knocking day to day, I have people open their doors and say to me, gee, I gotta, can you do anything about, I got a ticket from the police for having my own car parked in front of my house for 72 hours straight. Well, I'm not sure I know all the details of that. But if we could do that, perhaps we could have a, a fine for, for a hate incident that could be relieved by an episode of restorative justice. Thanks.
Thank you for your answers. We're going to move on now to Delinda. This will be our fifth question. I have a long intro to this question, so bear with me. And I'll repeat the question at the end, so you'll have a chance to take notes. Climate change is a global problem that has varied local effects. California is suffering from more deadly climate extremes. Heat waves, droughts, floods, and wildfires. Low-income and communities of color are especially hit hard by these impacts. As citizens, we can no longer wait for the federal government to act in order to protect those who are impacted the most. As a leader, how will you work to prevent climate change and to protect our community? So again, the question is, as a leader, how will you work to prevent climate change and to protect our community?
Boy, I wish I had all the answers to that question. And thank you for answering, for asking that question because it's not been asked in these forums. And, you know, every day I read the newspaper and I'm going, bah, we're cooked. We're absolutely cooked. And personally, as many of you know, I used to be the operations manager for Daily Acts. And it's an organization that teaches people to live more sustainably. And I personally do that. I rode my bicycle here today. I don't use plastic bottles. I have a zero-waste household. I do absolutely everything I can to sink carbon into my own yard. And it is what I do for my living. I work with organizations throughout this country that are trying to sequester carbon and to solve the climate crises through food and agriculture. On a local level, we could be doing so much more than we are doing. We need to really get off of We need to really get off of fossil fuels. We need to capture more stormwater and rainwater. And we need to, as a community, start rising up and become a model for others to solve this crisis.
Well, one of the most important things we can do is move as fast as we can away from petroleum. My first two years on the council, I was appointed to the Sonoma Clean Power Board. And in the course of my two years there, we implemented policies that put close to 1,000 electric vehicles on the roads in Sonoma County, expanded our electric vehicle charging stations throughout the county, and expanded solar power throughout the county, including a 2-megawatt solar panel farm west of Petaluma. Locally, we need to do this, because we're not getting any leadership in Washington. And in fact, the leadership in Washington is going in the opposite direction. So a move in transportation is a big part of what causes climate change and the problems that relate to climate change. So moving away from petroleum, I think the state is moving in a good direction. Our city has a good climate change policy. And I think we are taking these steps, we need to move them faster.
Yes, we absolutely need to take local leadership and regional leadership and personal leadership. I've been in an electric car for six years now, and it's been one of the best moves I've made. It's so much so that when the gas station people started talking about, no gas station here, I weighed in and I said, I'll do the math with you. It saves you money to drive the electric car. It pays for itself. You come out money ahead if you drive an electric car. And I've connected with there, I've connected with Daily Acts, who is an awesome organization locally, as Melinda has said, to help mentor in that transition. But what we've done with Sonoma Clean is really good, but the water we have in town is one of the biggest electric users there is. All the pumping to move it back and forth, it's key that we generate our energy that we have to use in a way clean way. So we do need to have, invite more green architecture into our community, and we need to make sure that our city policies stay strong on conserving and reducing use.
As a city, we're doing a good job trying to meet the demands of climate change and how we face, but we certainly can do better. And from a land use standpoint, as a Petaluma Planning Commissioner, we've approved projects around transit. And the importance of that is it gets people out of their cars. We have to change our car culture, which is why this is certainly a global problem that we need to meet here as well. So if we grow as a city, which I think we should be doing responsibly, we have to plan better, we have to plan smarter, like Kevin's talked about with his group. You know, where are we putting this development? We have a smart station right now that hopefully will get some more units eventually, and then a second smart station that will hopefully be developed at some point, where we can put more units, because that's gonna cluster our growth to encourage walkability, to encourage transit. And related to that, we need to do a better job implementing our bicycle and pedestrian planning. You know, we don't have enough resources right now, and that's a challenge overall at city hall of our budget. But if we don't invest in bicycle and pedestrian access, then folks won't do it.
I also believe that Petaluma can lead in some way in the fight against climate change. Other cities are doing this, certainly nations, and, well, nations are doing this as well. But I think we need to start talking about how long it's gonna take us to get to 100% sustainable energy, for example. I think when we talk about bringing jobs to Petaluma, we need to center on jobs that help with climate change. And I'd like to see Petaluma become a center of a place that companies that deal with climate change and ways to deal with it are attracted. I also think it's important to get cars off the road any way we can. I think we have to consider charging for parking, at least if there's only one or two people in the car. We need to then follow up and see that that gets cars off the road, okay? I'm not interested in charging for charging sake, but I think we need to strongly consider and test other things about whether we get off the road, cars off the road.
Well, I'm pretty sure every working family in Petaluma would love a Tesla in their driveway. I know I would. You know, unfortunately, most families can't afford a 30, that would mean, I'm saying for the low model of any electric car, a $30,000 starting price for a car. It's gonna be tough, but hopefully, you know, Elon Musk can, you know, start lowering the prices to make it affordable, take the Henry Ford model and run with it. Hopefully, put an electric car in every driveway. As a city, we need to, you know, really help promote businesses like World Centric, who are using plant-based disposable forks and knives and flatware. Also, you know, Amy's Kitchen is a Petaluma company, who I know a lot of, geez, that's quick. So, and let's not build gas stations 53 foot from a school. Thank you.
Okay. We are moving on to the last preorganized question, and that will be starting with you, Dave. And this question is, again, I will repeat it. Do you support phasing in a $15 an hour citywide minimum wage by 2020 for the city of Petaluma, Sebastopol, and Santa Rosa, three years earlier than the state's $15 minimum wage? Beginning in 2021, the citywide minimum would be raised annually for increases in the cost of living based upon the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the region. So the main question is, do you support phasing in a $15 an hour citywide minimum wage by 2020, three years earlier than the state's $15 minimum wage?
Thank you. I support phasing in the minimum wage earlier than the state. The state set the minimum wage forward over about a five-year period, which is very disappointing, given that $15 an hour is still a fairly low minimum wage. So what I would support would be moving it forward in Petaluma to a higher number in advance of the city. I'm not sure a 15 by January 2020 would be where I would go, given that it's about, gonna be 12 coming up in January. So that's what I do support. I think it needs to be done locally, and then I do agree to tie it to the cost of living, similar to how we did the living wage ordinance about 15 years ago. And as for Sebastopol and Santa Rosa, we don't have jurisdiction over those locales. Sometimes we get blamed for what they do, but they're gonna have to figure it out for themselves.
So, yes, I do endorse getting to 15 a lot quicker than the state. The state's ordinance was for the whole state, which includes economies like Barstow and Baker Steel, much lower cost of living. We should be leading the charge on this, we should be ahead on this. Further, we've probably all been contacted by the organization called Jobs for Justice, and they're advocating this as a regional solution, which I'm sure one of the Sebastopol and others name dropped in here. What happens with effective groups like that is we get a regional solution. And my son has started a small business here in town, he has 50 employees now, and I asked him this question, and he said, give me a level playing field. All I need is a level playing field. If we all have to honor this, then it's not a problem, let's do it. My last point on this is, we're discussing minimum wage, which is well and truly a minimum. We need to be discussing living wage.
Thank you. I'm in strong support of phasing in the minimum wage to $15 an hour on a much faster clip than what the state is doing under Senator Leno's bill from a few years ago. The bottom line is, a lot of these problems that we're talking about here today relate to poverty. And statewide, we have a poverty crisis. We have a lot of children living in poverty, we have working families living in poverty. We have to raise the wages. This relates directly to how people can afford rent, how people can afford to live here. If we don't raise wages, then people are gonna remain stuck. And we have to help them. That's the role of local government. We should be doing things to help people and to make everyone's lives better. The minimum wage can do that. If you look at national statistics, if we raised the minimum wage, $15 an hour, it would increase the cost of a Big Mac by 15 cents. I think we can all agree, paying a little bit more for your Big Mac is worth it. So we can have folks stay here with dignity and earn more money for the good work that they're doing. Lastly, one of the fastest-growing segments of our local economy is gonna be in restaurant and food. And so those folks are making minimum wage, we should increase it to 15.
I also agree with quicker reaching, this quicker reaching of $15 per hour. To me, a, one sentence that tells a lot about what's wrong with our system is that two folks, two people of any relationship, working full-time for minimum wage, can't find a roof in this town. $15 is not gonna solve that problem, but it's gonna move us in that direction. I believe when the minimum wage was first instituted, it was felt to be a minimum living wage. As others have commented, it's nowhere near a living wage now. And even if it had gone up from the initial minimum wage with the cost of living, it'd be about $19 now, still not a livable wage in this community. So I think, as others have mentioned, this is part of what we see in our, in the whole Bay Area, that our middle class is shrinking, and we have to do everything we can to move people back together.
Oh, absolutely. $15 an hour by 2020, I'd like to see it be, you know, go way faster than that. We're 10 years, I'm not gonna say out of the recession, since the recession started. There's been stagnant wages for the last 10 years, and it's not, I mean, the cost of living feels like it's gone up, it's doubled, because everybody's feeling it. And $15 an hour is a start, you know, a rising tide raises all ships. That's how I look at it, so it just gets the ball rolling. I've heard people say that it's gonna cause inflation, and that's, you know, very Republican of them, but, they're not here today, but, so. Yes, let's do it, let's get moving. Petaluma, start there, let's do Sonoma County and the whole Bay Area, and let's just join together and make this happen.
Well, I guess I'm in total agreement with all of my colleagues. I think we're all on the same page and all are saying the same thing. 17% of Californians live in poverty in one of the most robust states in the nation. And I mentioned that I have a retail store in Los Angeles, and in 2006, I opened, and my minimum wage for my employees, my sales clerks, was $15 an hour. And that was, what, 12 years ago? $15 an hour is $30,000 a year. That is not a living wage in our community. And I would suggest that, you know, we can go to 15, but, you know, let's push the envelope, remember, we're gonna become a model city. Let's push it. Can we go to 1750? Can I hear $20? Can I hear 19? Can we do it faster? And we need to do more. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your answers to our first round of questions. Let's give our speakers a round of applause. I now will hand the microphone over to my co-moderator, Gabby, and she will be conducting the portion of our forum today where we're taking questions from the audience.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Gabriela Odenes. I am co-chair of the voter engagement task force for North Bay Organizing Project. I'm also a member of the immigrant task force of the North Bay Organizing Project and a member of NPOP's Petaluma team. My family has lived in Petaluma since 1999. As a bilingual, first-generation college graduate and professional in this community, my upbringing informs my passion about civic engagement. Growing up, my family didn't go to city council meetings or participate in forums. There weren't people like us there. And when you're working multiple jobs, leaving home at 6:30 in the morning to commute through the backroads into Marin, and then come home in the evening to make dinner, do laundry, and all the other things you have to prep for in the next morning with two children, it's hard to be involved when the spaces to be heard are limited. I am here today because I want to see change in how we determine who gets a seat at the table, and how we determine whose voices count with regards to this city's affordability, this city's housing, this city's schools, and this city's future. With that being said, we're going to move on to questions from our audience. We've collected and sorted through their questions, and this will give our candidates more opportunity to shed light on what they will do for us. I will start with Kevin. But a question for everybody, and I'll start with Kevin. The Petaluma River is at the heart of our city and connects our neighborhoods, schools, parks, and businesses to the San Francisco Bay and the wetlands of international importance. How will you mobilize resources to address sea level rise and the need for dredging?
Well, first, I'd like to say that we share similar backstories. I was raised as one of 10 children in a two-bedroom, one-bath house. I think I know a little bit about hardship from the earliest days, and I think I know that education is the path out of that. Transitioning, and I'd love to fill in a lot of stories, but the time will run out. They're great stories. But the path out is education, and I'm a civil engineer, so I've done a lot of work with river groups and things. And I know that right now, we have a very mobile, mobilized volunteer group, and we need a city to empower them, to be better granted, so that operations happen. This is for recreational improvements along the river mainly. But the dredging question is, can we pull together and have private solutions as a Plan B if we can't shake money out of a federal government that doesn't wanna give anything to California?
We have to continue to press the federal government to get the dredging done for the Petaluma River. The Army Corps of Engineers has kicked the can down the road for many years, and the river as a whole hasn't been dredged by them in over a decade. We need to continue to work with our federal officials, like Congressman Huffman. He understands the importance, but we still have to keep raising it. It's important to help not only with flood control, but also recreational opportunities. A lot of people like to come into Petaluma on their boats, you know, all that stuff. They can't come here anymore. We're losing tax revenue, we're losing the charm that people like to come here and visit our downtown. And so if we can't keep up the river, that's a huge impact on our local businesses and our local economy. And in sea level rise, we have to keep planning better. We have to ensure that we don't concentrate so much along the river that's gonna impact and cause environmental harm. And ultimately, we have to keep advocating for ourselves in Washington DC. Right now, the city, due to budget cuts, we don't have any sort of advocacy there as much as we used to, we have to keep it up.
I'm sure you all heard the recent report of the Intergovernmental Panel earlier this week. I don't think there's much new in that report, but there's more urgency in the way it's presented. And I think it's important for us to find ways for the new council, to find ways to try to get this information across to our population, so there is more support for the things we need to do. It's hard for people to worry about any number of feet of increase in sea level 50 years from now, or even 15 years from now. But I think, again, Petaluma should take more of a lean in this regard. With respect to dredging, I've heard some good news recently in terms of a trip that Mayor Glass and Jared Huffman, our representative, took with the Army Corps of Engineers. And more than one person seems hopeful that that will result in some money for dredging from the government. Thanks.
Well, growing up here, some fond memories, the Petaluma Queen, Santa Claus coming up the river. Some things that I would get to share with my children. My daughter is seven, and my son is eight, and, you know, I don't even like to mention it, because, you know, it's kind of heartbreaking. I go down to the river and I look down, and it's pretty critical. The excuse is that we don't have enough upstream generating money to have the feds come in and dredge the river. Well, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, because I say we just keep squawking at it and just, and try to get this to happen. You know, if we gotta do a big sale...
You know, if we got to do a big sale to, to get the river dredged. I mean, I'm thinking Petaluma is one of the most generous, greatest cities on earth. I'm pretty sure we can band together and make this happen together, whether it's city council, or, you know, you know, us going door-to-door and selling dredge the river bonds. I don't know if that's a thing, but, thank you.
Well, I was heartened at a town hall meeting a few weeks ago with Jared Huffman, when he said that in this next budget cycle, that he does believe we are going to get the river dredged, the U.S. Corps of Army of Engineers, by next summer. I hope I can believe him. And there are so many organizations in this community working to work on our river, and I think we need to look at it as a watershed. You know, this is not just about the Petaluma River, but this is about what's upstream and around stream, and, and the rest of the watershed. And I'm really concerned about our floodplain, and it's one of the things that concerns me most about Rainier Crossing, is that we're actually raising the freeway, and then we want to build Rainier in the floodplain, which will have a great effect on future growth and what happens with our river if, in fact, that happens.
Our river is supposed to be dredged every four years. It hasn't been dredged since oh-four. Jared Huffman, our congressman, has put this as his primary issue of importance. The problem is not with the Army Corps of Engineers, they stand ready to do this. And to dredge the river, it's not just a Petaluma geographic problem, it goes all the way down to the bay. So the city has limited, A, we have limited resources to pay for it, and legally, we can't pay for it outside the city limit. It's something that needs to be done. I have heard the optimism too. Unfortunately, I've heard the optimism all four years I've been on the council. We are going to have a, a serious flooding problem if this isn't fixed. So it's something that our city council has been squawking about for four years. And to answer the second part of the question, I started to do it, we need, we need to move our transportation function in this city and, and the state away from petroleum and into renewable resources.
Thank you. Our second question, we'll start with Scott. Given that homelessness is expected to increase in the next few years, do you support maintaining or increasing city funding for COTS?
Well, the short answer is yes. The, the challenge in the backstory is, when the city lost our redevelopment agency due to a new state law that Governor Brown signed in back in 2011, that abolished all of our local funding for affordable housing, and COTS got a significant amount of money from redevelopment, something in the, in the budget item of five-hundred, six-hundred thousand dollars a year. Right now, COTS gets about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. We've been trying to support them as a city, and I think we should, they're doing amazing work, but the challenge is, it, it's a monetary decision. Petaluma's going to go broke in about two years if we don't change our budget situation. And there's a lot of reasons for that. We need increased revenue as, as one option, and I think some of that should go directly to homelessness services and affordable housing, and I think COTS should be one of those recipients. They're doing a great work, and we have to support them. Because they're not just doing work here in Petaluma, they're doing work now regionally, especially with the fire recovery. They're taking a leadership role in Santa Rosa, and that's helping us too, because this is a regional problem.
Of course, I'd like to provide more money to COTS and to a wide variety of other nonprofits in town. Someone recently mentioned the number of two-hundred-and-fifty is the number of nonprofits we have in town. And having worked with lots of them recently in terms of helping a Haitian refugee family get settled here over, over a full year, I have to say that I feel like all of our nonprofits are working like this. They have one finger in a hole in the dike that's leaking here, they've got their left big toe and another one here, and their left finger here, and maybe their little finger next to another hole here. Everyone's working on a shoestring, everyone's doing the best they can. We need to do better. This just gets back to our whole, this whole thing about equity in this country, and the disappearance of the middle class, and our need to know that in public health, if the top twenty percent of the people are close to the bottom twenty percent, if, if they get closer, everyone's healthier.
I think we need to start looking in, we have a lot of industrial, commercial areas in this town that are empty. We should start looking into, you know, start housing people. I mean, it could be a cot and, you know, a shower and a bathroom to help people out, to get them off the streets. Funds, things like COTS, start donating, not donating, helping pep housing and Habitat for Humanity, looking at developers who aren't trying to make the maximum profit, they're trying to fill a need, which is getting people with a roof over their head. This is what I'd like to see, having, you know, to, to help with our homeless problem. And I think the start is if we have unused commercial and industrial areas, the city should, you know, make a deal that we can start housing people in that unused space.
So it's estimated that we have over five thousand homeless people living in Sonoma County, and four to five hundred living right here in Petaluma, obviously, not in homes. And I absolutely support COTS. It was my birthday yesterday, my mother sent me a check, and I went straight to COTS. And again, like everyone else said, or other people have said, it is a revenue issue, and we're actually having to apparently cut COTS' budget again next year, and so they're going to have to start reducing services. And they are our only service provider in this area, and we really need them, and we need to support them. So I will do it any way that I can. And I would suggest that while they're working on transitioning people into homes, perhaps we need to provide services on our public spaces, on our public properties. Is there a way that we can actually provide housing, or provide at least a roof over our head for our homeless population?
Well, I've, I've supported money for COTS in the city for all four years I've been on council. It has diminished a bit. We started at a hundred-and-fifty thousand when I started, it's now a hundred per year. The money comes from our housing fund, which right now is two million dollars, and it sounds like a lot, but it's not enough to build any affordable housing in town at the moment. And I'm hopeful that with our new ordinance, that fund will either increase, or will get the development of new housing in the inclusionary area through the developers. In terms of the homeless issue, and in, in dealing with it, it's very complex. You know, people who are temporarily out of their homes due to a circumstance such as illness, job loss, and COTS can do good work with those folks. The people who have mental health issues, have addiction issues, they can help, but we need more help from our state, and we need to start dealing with it in a much broader way.
Yes, I would support more funding for COTS. COTS is a model, a national model organization. I've been affiliated with them since the very beginning, and, and they also, but the question, the question here is of finance. Where does the city find the next money? The city doesn't have money for any of its desires, it barely has money for its needs, so we have a revenue problem, and that's something we need to grip. And people don't want to hear the city needs more money, but that's a true thing. Further, the city has city unused lands, rather than going to see a, a commercial land or a privately-owned land, the city has lands that it can put into housing, and has talked about putting into housing. The trouble is, what's the community reaction? We need to stop saying we have concerns, and start saying we have commitments to changes that need to get made. The last point is, you know, there's an assumption that housing, that homelessness will increase. We need to get right to the root causes and spend money on the root causes of homelessness.
Thank you, everyone. Our third question, we'll be starting with Dennis. Aside from the Rainier Caulfield connectors, what would you do to make our streets safer for cycling and walking?
Of course, I support, as we all do, I believe, the eventual construction of the Rainier connector. But as, as an engineer and a mathematician, my calculations show it's going to be at least eight years. If everything goes perfect, we may have that in eight years. We have to do something before that. And in my mind, the biggest thing, of course, is to get cars off the road, and the biggest way I see to get cars off the road is bikes. How do we get more bikes on the road? We have to make the, our bike routes safer and more plentiful. I've always been a part-time biker, but every time I plot a route across town, either north to south, or east to west, there are areas that worry me, especially if I'm taking my mentee from Mentor Me in junior high school, you know, someone else's child with me, and so I think we need to do anything we can to improve our bike route.
Well, most of us are drivers, and most of us are pedestrians at one time or another, or, or bicyclists. I would like to see bicycle safety and pedestrian safety classes for all, because it seems we're bicyclists and, and people in automobiles aren't getting along right now, and I think it has a lot to do with the frustration of the traffic in Petaluma. You know, I see bicyclists running red lights, I see automobiles not giving the right of way to cyclists and pedestrians, and it's, I think if we, we educate people and let them know that we all have to share these roads together, that it'd be a great step towards it. You know, I am very hard on my children when they're riding bikes, and how to not get hit by cars, and to do the right thing. I'd also like to see re-timing of the lights to get the, the traffic flowing in this town.
I mentioned I rode my bike here today, right?
Yeah.
Because I am a cyclist, and, and actually been a triathlete at one time, so, and I'd like to give a big shout-out to Bike Petaluma, because they are starting to host monthly bicycle, bicycling. I haven't been yet, so I haven't participated in one, been busy the last couple of months, but, but that's encouraging to me. And in the five years that I've lived here, I have seen more and more cyclists actually come onto our streets. So people that are moving here are cyclists, and they are using their bicycles as transportation. And so, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of creating transit, housing around transit, or transit areas, I think that will be a big help in terms of getting people out of their cars and on, on to being pedestrians as well. But in terms of infrastructure, we apparently just got a fifty thousand dollar grant, and the bicycle and pedestrian committee was not included in terms of how that money is going to be used. So I'd like to see them actually have a, have a say in whether there are sharers, or how we spend that money to increase cycling.
So in the four years I was on, about two years ago, we had an issue that came up regarding applying for a grant for a road diet for Petaluma Boulevard South. In prior years, that road had been considered for the same grants, and had been rejected. We, this time around, applied for the grant. It's a two-point million, two-point-nine million dollar grant, the city's going to have to match a certain amount of funds, but it's going to change Petaluma Boulevard South from East Street all the way down to Cory Heights traffic circle. It's going to reduce it to two lanes of traffic with turn lanes, reasonable parking, and bike lanes were part of it, not all of it. That's an example of what we need to do. Not all road diets are created equal, some are really not good. This one, I think, will improve it. Pedestrian safety in that area is poor, and this will help. That's the type of things that I've done, and that's the type of things that I'll continue to do on the council.
Yeah, we do need to make bicycle, safer roads for bicycling and safer alternatives for bicycling. I rode with Bike Petaluma on their inaugural ride last month, we had a great time, and it's a great way to get around the city. The first part that we did was the Lynch Creek Trail. Digressing here, the county has Measure M, a tax on the ballot for parks. Some of that money comes to Petaluma for improvements of its recreation facilities, and as chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, I'm going to be advocating strongly that the first dollars we get go into improving Lynch Creek Trail. Secondarily, I'm chasing Smart, who promised a north-south cross-town connector. These are cross-town connectors, Light Rainier only for bikes. Smart has promised from Hayran to South Point, and they, so far, they're just promised and not delivered. But in addition to that, if, if you want people, other people to take their bike, as a car owner, make it easier. You know, cooperate with these kinds of things. Okay, thank you.
One of the biggest challenges we have here in Petaluma is our road state. We have the worst roads in the Bay Area. They're unsafe not only for cars, but for people too, when they're out walking, for ADA access and for bikes. So we need to get more funding for our road system, we need to prioritize and get pavement filled. Now, all of us here can take a big step on November sixth in voting no on Proposition Six, which is going to preserve funding for us to improve our roads a little bit. It's a critical measure, not only for public transit, but for our pavement, and so please vote no on Six. I think, secondarily, as we look as a community, when new development, new projects come into town, we have to ensure that those developers are providing adequate access for bikes and pedestrians, and how does that connect overall to the city? A lot of times, we, we think in isolation and in silos when these projects come online, we have to reorient ourselves and think better, and to think smarter about when these projects come on. And also, again, we have a 2008 master plan for bicycle and pedestrian access. There's no money, we have to get the money to implement it, there's a tiny great trail work we can do with that.
Thank you for keeping us on time, Teresa. Okay. Rob, I'll be starting with you. Our next question. Will you advocate for our children and neighbors who will be negatively impacted by a sixteen pump Safeway gas station at Maria and McDowell? Do you have the courage to vote against large corporations?
Oh, this one's not right in my wheelhouse. I'm the only one sitting in this table right here who actually signed the appeal against it. I know some people here for legal obligations could not participate. I was contacted by Safeway to come down and talk to them, and so they could pitch their sixteen pumps, and within thirty seconds into the conversation, I realized it was a bad idea. You have sixteen pumps in a terrible intersection, fifty feet from a school, ballpark, daycare center. Yeah, it's not a bad idea. Doing my due diligence, I must have spent another thirty hours trying to be convinced, and I'm still where I was at thirty seconds in. It's not a good idea, there's science behind it, and I, hopefully, anybody that's making this decision, whether the city gets sued or not, they show political will and vote no on the gas station.
So, full disclosure, when I worked as an urban planning consultant, I worked for one of the major grocery outlets in Los Angeles, and I actually got a gas station approved at that gas station outlet, but that was in the 1990s. The world is a little bit different, and that was in suburbia. And again, this is a very different era that we're living in, and the margins on groceries is incredibly thin. So this is not just about gas, this is about groceries, and about what we spend and how we value our food. And the reason that they want to put the gas station there is for revenue, and solely because of revenue. And they're putting it there because that's where their store is. They have, their total motivation is profit. It has nothing to do with, with the safety or what we want with Petaluma, and I would suggest that it's absolutely the wrong direction to be going in. I think we already said that we need to be ridding ourselves of fossil fuels, and I don't think adding that sort of gas station to our town is, is necessary. But it's, it's a legal issue. Our zoning actually allows it, so I think we need to change our zoning code.
Well, I'm probably the only one who's going to be voting on at least the preliminary steps here, so I have to be very careful about how I answer this, and I don't mean to be condescending to anybody, it just, I don't want to get accused from the vote. The status is, it looks like this decision, the next decision's going to be made on December third, to determine whether an environmental impact report is going to be required by Safeway to go forward with the project. Where it stands is that a group of neighbors has appealed, and they have hired a lawyer and consultant who has raised the question of whether an EIR is going to be needed. We have not been fully briefed on that, and that's We have not been fully briefed on that and that's why it's going to continue. The paperwork involved here is enormous. And we'll be deciding whether an EIR will be required on December 3rd or if it is. And Safeway has their option of either going forward to challenge the decision or providing an environmental impact report over the course of the next few years.
Mr. King, you haven't answered the question.
I'd be glad to continue, but I don't want, is that all right?
Well, actually, we're good. Sorry, everyone, if you didn't answer, you can approach him afterwards. We're going to continue with Kevin. Thank you.
My position is this gas station makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, you can argue about the toxics and they can bring their scientists and your scientists fight, but we're talking about $100 million for Rainier because we have cross-town traffic problems and you want to drive more traffic through an intersection for 10 cents a gallon? That's just crazy. Secondarily, I've already told you about my position with electric cars. We have to break our dependency on petroleum. I mean, I think that our position, dependency on petroleum is just, is what forces us to send our kids to third-world countries to shoot their kids and have their kids shoot back. I mean, it's just a chemical dependency we need to break. But then, lastly, you do have to think, when the Planning Commission hears this, they have to vote on what the rules are. When the commission, when the city council hears this, they get to vote on what's best for the community. So that's the real tough distinction here. That's why it's good that there's an appeal process. So, thank you.
I am a member of the Petaluma Planning Commission and earlier this year I voted against the gas station. And at first, we heard the project on May 8th. And initially, it sounded okay on paper, but once Safeway presented their case and we heard from the community, we had to scratch our heads and think, well, there's got to be something else there. This isn't just approving a gas station. And I think it's amazing that the community came out and organized themselves to help educate the commission and educate city staff on the actual real impacts that we're going to face with this gas station. And let's be honest here, McDowell Elementary and those two preschools there are full of low-income children. We're talking about what we're doing for the Latino community. Well, look at this impact of environmental racism that's right going to be at their doorstep. I mean, we have to be consistent here. I'm proud to stand against it and I think Safeway has not made a good case. They're disrespectful to the community. They've been disrespectful to the city of Petaluma and we can't just sell our soul for cheap gas. You know, unfortunately, with the gas tax, like we talked about in my last answer, gas is a little more expensive.
My first comment when I heard about this was that I don't talk to too many people in Petaluma who say simply, we need another gas station. And I talk to a lot who imply that they hope gas stations are obsolete in another 10 years. Others have been saying this as well. I am against the gas station. I want to comment a little bit about the puzzling aspect to me about this is that the health risk assessment prepared by Safeway, I thought had some holes in it at the time, but then when the school district submitted their report, there wasn't much to be said against the Safeway report. On the other hand, when the no-gas-air folks got a third health risk assessment, many more discrepancies are pointed out. I think it's going to be difficult for the council not to order a complete environmental impact report. And they have concerns about the biases, possible biases in that second report that was funded by the school district.
Thank you for your answers. And like I said, our candidates will be available after. So if you want to have a conversation or approach them after all of our questions, you may do so. We have two more questions left and this one I'll be starting with Delinda. Living downtown where many renters live means cars are always filling our streets. Our streets are never clean of leaves and debris despite paying for refuse. Would you consider instituting a no parking on certain mornings, afternoons, with enforcement, of course, to allow street cleaning to occur?
Does that number?
Does that mean we don't clean our streets?
Yes, I think would be the short answer for that, of course. Sorry, a little caught off guard by this, street cleaning. Okay. Can we talk about, go back to climate change and talk about low-carbon vehicles or bike lanes?
Delinda, I never received the question.
Very good.
Yeah. So the question being, would you consider instituting a no parking on certain mornings, afternoons to allow street cleaning to occur?
She said yes.
And I said yes.
So we already have street cleaning, okay.
Yeah, we have street cleaning, but they go around cars. So a lot of streets don't actually get cleaned because they're busy going around the vehicles.
And so part of the question though is instituting a no parking.
Which is the only way you can actually get your streets cleaned is actually to move the vehicles from one side of the street to the other. Somebody lived in New York City, we had to do that every two days.
And I think part of this is also, there's, the audience question is asking the lack of enforcement on it.
But we don't have a requirement right now in order to, as I understand it, to move our cars from one side of the street to the other to do street cleaning. So I'm confused. Yes, I would support it, absolutely. I think I said that.
I certainly would consider looking at it. I see, I work downtown. I've had an office downtown for over 25 years and, you know, the streets are up and down in terms of their cleanliness. I, you know, I think we do have a problem downtown with parking as well, so it has to be balanced. If we do that in downtown, you might have to consider doing it throughout the entire city. I know on my street where I live, the street cleaners come by and they loop around the cars when they're parked on there and the streets are completely.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
I know, and that's what I'm answering. So I mean, I'm telling you, I would look at it. But I do need, you do need to balance other interests here. There are people downtown that work and live there that you can park. I really don't have a definitive answer about street cleaning, to be candid. And the gentleman back there, I'll talk to you later. We don't have full discretion on the Safeway gas to just say it's a good thing or a bad thing, unfortunately. I have my own personal view as that Safeway should have been a hell of a lot more cooperative with the neighborhood in dealing with this issue.
Thank you. We're going to continue with this question.
Yes, yes, I would. Yes, I would support mandated parking, enforced parking clearance in the neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods where trees are. And why, you may say? Well, the street sweeping is mandated by our municipal storm drain permits from the Regional Water Control Board. That's why they do it, that's why we pay for it in our waste bills. And the reason they do that is because the leaves, everything that gets in the gutter goes in the river. Okay, so all the leaves that go in the river decompose in the river instead of decomposing on land. When they decompose in the river, they suck out oxygen out of the water and hurt the environment. So that's why we do it. Now, if we don't clear our cars away, it's ineffective and stupid. I don't know why we do stupid things. Okay? The second, the second part of this is it also removes solids and trash that otherwise get in our river also. So yes, we want to be doing that. And then thirdly, it keeps our municipal storm drain cleaning costs down. So yes, we should be doing this.
Yes, I'm in favor of looking at increased enforcement and changing how we even permit our parking. You know, right now in Petaluma, parking is challenging in downtown. We've heard for many, many years, another parking structure. I don't know if that's necessarily the answer. We need to look at supporting more movement downtown and supporting the fact that our local businesses need more movement. It can't be static and I think we have a lack of enforcement in general with any parking downtown currently. So I would be happy to look at that and be in support of it.
I would also be happy to have a look at that. I don't have much more to add to this. I'd like to use some of my time, however, to talk about possibly the city having a professional grant writer. I've mentioned this in many of these issues. Anything the city does involves writing grants. And I've talked to people in multiple departments who, when I ask them, who's writing grants? They say, well, Joe was in our department. He's been here 12 years and he went to a two-day class on how to write grants. And I've been to a class like that and don't consider myself a grant writer. I think particularly in the bicycle area, we have grants going unclaimed that we could qualify for and I think a professional grant writer would be helpful in that regard.
Yes, I would, I would support that. I, last couple of years I've worked in San Francisco and man, they're cutthroat when it comes to towing cars on sweep day. It's actually a huge generator, or a generator of revenue in the city. Huge. A lot of money. Not saying that's going to, you know, pave our roads or anything, but it's at least a start, especially downtown since we're, you know, it's, you know, we do work, some people live, but it is touristy and we've got to keep it as clean as possible and bring that appeal in for all that outside money that they spend in our city. My neighborhood, most of the people that live in my neighborhood work for a living, so they're not, I mean, the streets are empty when, so we have to do it on a case-by-case basis in which neighborhoods, you know, with trees and, you know, what, you know, case by case. It's, some neighborhoods are really, need cars moved, so thank you.
Thank you. We have... Just one second. Dave, we'll start with you. Would you support a mandatory health inspection on all rentals, including old Victorians, to ensure tenants do not live in houses with mold, leaks, or other health hazards?
I would if we had endless money in the city budget, but we don't. So I don't know how you would pay for that, quite frankly, from a city level. I mean, I'm just trying to be realistic with you folks. We have a serious crisis with our financial situation in the city and we're losing police officers. Our public safety facilities are in disrepair. Our roads, as noted, are among the worst in the Bay Area. We don't have a way to get across town. We just don't have the money to hire somebody and we're not going to. I'm going to be supporting either a general or a specific tax to try to deal with some of these issues if I get re-elected. But you can't just ask for something without a cost attached to it, unfortunately. It's probably needed, unfortunately, we don't have the money.
I think it's a good idea and I'd like to see it get further thought out and discussed. Perhaps setting up a reporting operation rather than a blanket inspection could work, but it does come down to asking the city to provide more services. And a big question we haven't talked about today is this, how broke is the city? And the city's dead broke and that's important to note because we'll need the tax. The only thing that can solve the city's problem with police and fire and everything else is some sort of revenue enhancement. And I'm pretty sure that people are not ready to vote for any revenue enhancement. And if we add every new program that we really need or want, it increases what the ask is and decreases the chance that we get any of the needed funding. The council's role has to be to get out and advocate for the funding and to get all of you to buy in that increased funding's a good idea. Well, what that means is workshops where we decide more police or more street sweeping or more rent control, more efforts here. How do we sort that?
The challenge with this question is that this is a code enforcement issue and Petaluma has one code enforcement officer for the entire city of Petaluma. Joe Garcia, he's great, but he's one man and he works for our police department. We have to get more resources, bottom line, for these sorts of regulatory and oversight mechanisms to protect not only our people, but also look after our businesses too because Joe will go around and look for things like litter, broken windows, companies that are out of compliance, our whole rat infestation downtown. We don't have enough tools in our tool belt to tackle these issues. I wish we did. And I think ultimately, as a community, we have to figure out what our priorities are and where we're going to raise money from. We could certainly look at a fee to landlords to pay for some of that, but I think we have to have a go-by discussion of what those costs look like and what's the problem we're trying to address. Because ultimately, you know, we need better landlords and we need landlords that understand their responsibilities so we can work together with tenants. And other communities have looked at mediation, looked at a rent stabilization board. I mean, there's a lot of options that we can consider.
As an environmental medicine specialist, I've dealt with some issues like this and I would say that for the reasons that have already been discussed, it probably wouldn't make much sense to make a mandatory inspection of every housing situation. That would be, that wouldn't be very expensive. But I think it may be possible for the city to consider doing some sort of targeted inspections in terms of if we wanted to really limit the number to people who really needed this would be someone who had a member of the family who became ill in a compatible way shortly after moving into a certain housing situation. And perhaps even requiring a note for their physician to sign off that this was to be utilized. And in some of these cases, it may even be possible to get insurance, health insurance, to pay for such as a. Thanks.
Well, I know when selling a house, you have to have inspections and usually that cost is absorbed by the person buying the house or selling the house, however it's worked out. Yeah, if we had, if we had infinite amounts of money, I'd say go for it, at least to put renters at, you know, with some peace of mind because health is very important. But I see the only way that's getting paid for is if, you know, the family that's moving in is paying for it and it's, you know, it's definitely one of those things that you can work out with your landlord, but I don't see the city stepping in and doing it for you. And yes, Joey is very, very busy. He, I went to high school with him, he's a good dude. But yeah, he's, he's one man and, you know, I, you know, just talking to him, he's like, I gotta go. I got 27 fires to put out a day. So until we have more manpower and staffing and money in the city, it's kind of low on priorities unless there's a complaint with health issues attached to it.
I'm not sure what more to add to that. I think everyone's been very coherent and complete in terms of the questions to the, the answers to the question. I agree, we do have very few city resources. And if we can talk about the budget perhaps for a moment, we've not really talked about that, but we, our revenue streams consist of property taxes and sales taxes primarily. And that's what we rely on, 11 cents on the dollar in property taxes and 1 cent on the dollar for sales taxes. And I think this room might agree that sales tax is actually regressive and that that's probably not the direction we want to be going in. And so the real question here is what will be our other revenue streams in order to pay for these essential city services that we need to be providing? And I've knocked on a lot of doors and people are telling me that they're actually willing to, you know, I'll give you a hundred bucks a year if you can fix my street out front. So I think there is, and at least my sense is that there are people who are willing to step up and come to a solution of how we're going to manage our budget.
Thank you, everyone, for your answers. And thank you to the audience for participating and providing us questions to ask today. We have finished our questions for the afternoon and will now have our candidates provide us with their closing statements. Candidates, you have 90 seconds each and I will start with Kevin.
All right, no time to think that over. Let's see. You know, I've been involved in Petaluma for a very long time and getting the grip of all the different components of it from, I mean, just the whole range of people in town. And you don't get to say everything in a dialogue like this. Like I can't drop in how many Latinos I coached and all the soccer teams I coached, how many times I've, you know, participated in inclusionary exercises and demands on other groups. But that's who I am. I've been in town, working and accomplishing, whether it is getting the new ballparks built or forming a forum to help the people understand what development is coming to town, right? Or in my civil engineering career for municipal government, where I've built bridges, where I have paved roads, where I'm working with Ronan Park right now on $1.4 million in path improvements in their town. Like, why aren't we jumping on this? But I have a lot of experience in what it is to run a city government. But I have a lot of experience in what it is to run a city government. I've been in front of city government planning issues. I fought city government on planning issues, but I think the main thing comes down to, you, the people, have to support the city council you put in. We find many things like a bike, we did a bike boulevard on D Street as the idea, right? The, it was well-received except by certain people who took it away and said, "No, we don't want biking in Pedaluma." Well, the people have to speak, the people have to get engaged, and that's what I'm hoping for all of us today.
Hi, thanks for being here. I'm Scott Alonso, one of the seven candidates for city council, and I'm really happy to be here, and I'm glad there's a lot of turnout here. And I think this underscores the importance of having our civic meetings, not just on a weeknight. You know, we're here on a Saturday afternoon, we're, we're including more people, a part of the process. When we talk strategically about how we include the community, this is one of those things we need to do. If, if I'm elected, I would hold regular office hours, town hall meetings, advocate for more inclusion on the east side of town, involve the local government. It's one of the reasons why I support district elections for city council, because we need stronger neighborhood connections at city hall. I have a record of civic service in this community. I'm on the Planning Commission right now, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Public Library Foundation, where we help raise money for this beautiful library that's doing an amazing work for the community. So I'm, I'm involved, I'm passionate about public service, but I'm more passionate about helping all of us grow and learn together so we can adapt to the, the real challenges we need to meet as a community, to fight for more affordable housing, look after our roads and infrastructure needs. I mean, we have some aging buildings in town. Our fire station was built under FDR, pop quiz, way before I was born. So we have a lack of resources, we have to work together with you, and we can't just be against everything. We have to work together to find common ground, and I think I can be that voice on the city council.
As the campaign goes on, it seems to me that all the platforms get closer and closer together. The differences, people are trying to, to differentiate themselves, but truly, the answers to the questions are more like this, coming closer together. I think you need to look at, at what we've done, and we've all tried to say that. I too have been on city commissions, I'm a retired physician, I have some engineering training, I have coached youth sports. I, I have been on the ground advocating for, for tenant protections and affordable housing. And where I'm getting to is that I think, none of us know other things that are gonna come up to a vote beyond what we've discussed. There could be many more votes than what we've already discussed, and I think the best thing you can do, because we can't predict those, is to find people that share the most of your values and vote for those folks, and I hope you'll vote for me.
I will have to agree with Dennis. We, we have very separate platforms, because it seems like that's what's the best for Pedaluma as a whole. I'm going down this, these last couple months, down this political road, I've noticed that, you know, we got two sides, and one side is, I agree with eighty percent of what they say, and eighty percent of what this side says, and if we can just kind of shake away that other twenty percent, come in the middle, it helps the eighty percent in the middle just trying to get by. I get one or two phone calls a week from lifelong friends, kids I grew up with, saying they can't take it anymore, they're moving to Cloverdale, Idaho. I don't understand Idaho, but this is Pedaluma. I'm gonna stay here. You know, I planted my flag fourteen years ago when I bought a house at a very young age. It was tough, but I could have walked away, and I realized I would never have the ability to live in the town that I grew up in and I love. So I stuck it out, it was tough. Thank you to my wife who put up with it. You know, times were tough, rubbing two nickels together to try to buy dinner, and, you know, hopefully we didn't run out of gas on the way to work. So I understand, truly understand people's struggles of just trying to make it in this town, and like I said, I'd like to bring that to the forefront of the conversation. What are we gonna do for the average, ordinary Pedaluma resident trying to just make it and it's needed in this town? So I feel, I can, I can definitely address that. Thank you.
So I made a choice to move to Pedaluma five years ago from Los Angeles, and that choice was based on really my heart. I, I drove around Hollis and Elmerin County, and when I got to Pedaluma, I went, ugh, it just felt right. And I, it's the best decision that I have ever made, and I've made a lot of decisions in my lifetime. And I really want to serve this community. I love this community, and I want to see it become a place that is more sustainable, more resilient, more healthy, and more vibrant. We already have such fabulous things here and wonderful people and great possibilities. We really can become a model city. We have everything that it takes. We just need you. And I belong to, I'm a member, a board member of the United States Green Building Council. I'm also a member of the Sonoma County Food System Alliance and a fellow of the Leadership Institute of Technology of Economy and Ecology. And I'm most proud of the endorsements, and I think when you look at what really separates us, not only our experience and our background and our history, but also who has endorsed us and what organizations are behind this, and I'm proud of the ten organizations have chosen me as the person who they think will bring that depth and breadth of knowledge to this community, including the Democratic Party and the Latino PAC and the Sierra Club and Conservation Action, and they really do represent who I am, along with the three-hundred-and-fifty people on my website. This is really a grassroots campaign, and please vote for me.
Over the course of the four years I've been on the council, we have made some good inroads on areas like affordable housing, back most recently with our amendment to the ordinance. On our infrastructure, which was lagging, we have replaced almost every street light in town. We've done much more road repair. We've expanded our purple pipe to allow recycled water in, in larger parts of, of the community, and we'll, we'll continue to do that. And we've, we've done a lot of work in replacing our aging underground water pipes, both for delivery of water and wastewater. We need to do better on, on getting our fire and police departments funded, but we've accomplished an awful lot. On the environment, as I said earlier, I've supported and led on policies to get more electric vehicles on the road, which is very important, and they're not all Teslas, I've known of them, probably, where Teslas are our program of rebates. We've expanded the electrical vehicle charging, which is not only good for jobs, but it's good for the environment. But ultimately, you make a judgment, not on what people have done, but what you think they're going to do in the next four years. You can judge it a bit on what they've done. But I would ask you to look at my endorsements. I've been endorsed by my, by our congressman, our state senator, our assembly member, our supervisor, and most importantly, I think, our mayor and four of my fellow council members. And I think those are the people that can watch a person close up for four years and make a judgment on what type of person they are, how sound their judgment is, how willing they are to cooperate and listen and get things done. And I've got things done in my four years, I intend to do it again in the next four.
That concludes our forum for today. And I'm gonna, excuse me, I'd like to thank our candidates for making time to be present today and listen to our community through our questions. Thank you. Thank you again to our co-sponsors, Friends of the Pedaluma River, the Latinx Student Congress of Sonoma County, North Bay LGBTQ Families, opposed the Pedaluma Safeway gas station, Pedaluma Community Relations Council, Pedaluma Rapid Response Network, the Rocket Rooster, Sonoma County Commission on Human Rights, and the Unitarian Universalists of Pedaluma. Thank you especially to all of you, our community, who came out to listen and engage in this vital part of local democracy, as well as those listening in on Facebook. We have the power to educate ourselves, to decide for ourselves and shape the community we live in by helping it grow in a healthy way. The right, this right here, what we're doing today, what we're all involved in, is an example of what we do as the North Bay Organizing Project. We provide space for the community to have access to the democratic process, no matter who you are, where you were born, what you do, how much you make, or what language you speak. This is how we build a flourishing community. So for everyone, please feel free to stay until two thirty today to talk with the rest of the candidates, and reach out to any one of us, members of the North Bay Organizing Project if you have any questions. Everyone, have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you.